I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, please come on in.
DeYoung.
Here.
Bakoven.
Here.
Rainer Horst.
Here.
Van Stryland.
Here.
Skibow.
Yes.
Peterson.
Here.
Very good, thank you. I'd like to announce that there will be no policy planning meeting following the regular council meeting. Now I'd like to move on to item number two, the approval of the intent of the agenda. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So whom?
Van Stryland.
Support.
Support Skibow. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Clear call or roll.
Van Stryland.
Yes.
Skibow.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Bakoven.
Yes.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Motion carried. Now is the time for the public forum. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to address the council regarding any agenda items, please step forward, speak into the microphone, state your name and where you live. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So whom?
Bak- Bakoven, sorry to tell you. And Skibow? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Clear call or roll.
Bakoven.
Yes.
Skibow.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Van Stryland.
Yes.
Motion carried. On to petitions and communications. Item number one, special event permit request for the Pella Youth Coalition Block Party. Corey, if you'd please explain.
Absolutely. The Pella Youth Coalition is requesting a special event permit on the 26th of July to host an end-of-the-summer block party for high school students within Colville Park. The event is scheduled to start at 6:00 p.m. and conclude by 9:00 p.m. The newly-formed coalition mission is to provide students and adults the tools and support to positively impact direct, free, and alcohol-free attitude behaviors. The promoter expects 100 to 200 high school students who will attend the block party, enjoy lawn games, music, food, and everything in Colville Park. All permanency departments have reviewed this application and comments are included in the packet. In addition, the promoter has coordinated rental of Colville Park Shelterhouse and the community services department. Finally, the special event permit and subjective insurance have been received, therefore approved.
Very good. Thank you, Corey. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So whom?
Rainer Horst and support Van Stryland. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Clear call or roll.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Van Stryland.
Yes.
Skibow.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Bakoven.
Yes. Motion carried. On to resolutions. Item number one, resolution number five eight eight one entitled "Resolution Setting Dates of a Consultation and a Public Hearing on Proposed Amendment Number One to the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan in the City of Pella, State of Iowa." Corey, if you'd please explain.
Absolutely. This resolution establishes August 21 as the public hearing date for amendment number one to the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan to account for additional public infrastructure for potential housing building in Oslo. The original plan approved by council on January 16 included only phase one of this development's infrastructure. Developer has expanded their plans now and intends to have lots for single-family housing. This amendment simply adjusts the estimated cost for the public infrastructure to nine hundred fifty- from nine hundred fifty thousand to 2.1 billion. The passage of this amendment does not obligate council toward economic development incentives, rather simply allows the developer to consider economic development incentives up to the 2.1 billion. In addition, Iowa Code and the city are required to hold a consultation with all affected tax entities prior to adopting the major urban area. In summary, this resolution establishes the following dates, August 2, 2018, as the consultation date for taxing entities, and August 21, 2018, as the public hearing date for amendment number one to the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan.
Great. Thank you, Corey. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So whom?
Support.
Bakoven and support Skibow. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Clear call or roll.
Bakoven.
Yes.
Skibow.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Van Stryland.
Yes.
Motion carried. On to ordinances. Item number one, ordinance number nine four four entitled the ordinance repealing section 120 dot zero five sub eleven of the Pella City Code and adopting a new section 120 dot zero five sub eleven relating to prohibited sales of acts. This motion or this ordinance was tabled on July 3, 2018, council meeting. It will require a motion to remove from the table once Corey's going to explain what it is.
Great. In order to address concerns raised by council at the meeting on July 3, staff has amended proposed ordinance to specify that the individual 21 years of age or older is accompanied by a person under the age of 21 must be the person's parent or legal guardian. The previous ordinance, if you recall, simply required a minor to be accompanied by an adult 21 years of age or older. A little background on the age restriction for microbreweries. The state of Iowa does not prohibit minors from being on the premises of licensed establishments, but rather provides local jurisdictions with the authority to restrict minors from licensed establishments for 18 years. Currently, the Pella City Code prohibits minors from being on the premises of a licensed establishment with the exception of restaurants, where more than 50% of the dollar volume is generated from the sale of serving food. In addition, City Code, microbreweries cannot obtain a Class C liquor license, meaning they're unable to sell liquor. This is one of the key differences between a bar and tavern and a microbrewery in the City Code. Finally, microbreweries are permitted through a special use permit process, which allows the Board of Adjustment to review the proposed location and determine if it's a good fit for the surrounding area. This process is related by another part of the law. We'll just run through the process briefly here. Prior to the special use permit being granted, city staff provides the Board of Adjustment with a detailed report and recommendation, including the following and others, public safety concerns, parking requirements, the necessary infrastructure of the location, and then we also double-check compliance with City Code and the concrete plan, and of course, land use compatibility requirements. In addition, we look at proposed operations and operating hours. Based on these observations, staff will also provide the Board of Adjustment a recommendation on whether to approve the special use permit subject to any applicable restrictions. Following that presentation of recommendation, a public hearing is held at the Board of Adjustment, and after notifying the areas of property owners of the application, public forums held in concerns with proposed microbrewery address. Following that public hearing, the Board of Adjustment would make a decision on the special use permit application, considering staff's recommendation and public input. Additionally, the Board of Adjustment can also revoke a special use permit and leave out their problems or issues arise, not just for the microbrewery, but in case of any special use requirement. Listed on the following slides is a chart comparing regulations of microbreweries with other cities in close parts of the Pella. It's important to note that not every city has a separate classification for microbreweries, therefore requirements for minors to be allowed on the premises of microbreweries may differ from our proposed ordinance, and in those cases, they're typically seen and governed as bar or tavern. On the far left column, you'll see the jurisdictions of the city. The second column from the left is the zoning classification, so that's typically whether communities have a microbrewery ordinance in place or they're governed by the bar and tavern regulations. Third column from the left is whether minors are allowed on the premises, and in all the communities that we checked and listed on the board, they are allowed on the premises, but there are certain restrictions for many of the communities, as you can see. And then finally, we looked at our restrictions for minors, and we were not able to find in these city ordinances our restrictions for minors. Taking this consideration, we put together the amendment to City Code, chapter one twenty oh five eleven, and it states a person or club holding a liquor license or retail wine or beer permit, and persons or clubs agents or employees shall not do any of the following, permit any one person under 21 years of age to remain on the licensed premises unless 50% of the dollar volume of the business established with its country, the sale and serving of their food. The provision does not apply to holders of Class C beer permit only, or the key point here that we're discussing tonight, or holders of a Class B beer permit who also holds a special Class A beer permit, when that person under 21 years of age is accompanied by- on the premises by a parent or legal guardian who is 21 years of age or older. And considering the potential map to City Code, it's important to note that the microbrewery would be required to hold both a Class B and Class Special A or Special Class A beer permit. The Class B beer permit allows commercial establishments to sell beer and wine closers for on-premises consumption, and the Class B beer permit holders cannot sell liquor. In summary, staff is recommending the approval of this proposed ordinance for the following reasons: the Class C liquor license restrictions for microbreweries, the special use permit requirements for microbreweries, and the requirement that a minor can only be on the premises of a microbrewery if they're accompanied by a parent or legal guardian 21 years of age or older. Of course, this is staff's recommendation, but if council chooses to make additional requirements or make any other change to proposed ordinance, that's a policy decision. Hope you're more than happy to discuss that.
Great. Thank you, Corey. Next order of business is for a motion to remove from the table. Would anyone consider making that motion?
So whom?
Motion to remove from the table by DeYoung.
Support.
Support Skibow. Any discussion?
Mayor, at this time, I would propose an amendment to-
Bruce, we need to take it off the table first, and then we'll take the amendment. We'll vote to take it off the table first. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Clear call or roll. And again, this is simply to remove this ordinance from the table so that we can consider it.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Skibow.
Yes.
Bakoven.
Yes.
Rainer Horst.
Yes.
Van Stryland.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
It is now off the table and available for modification or consideration or discussion.
Mayor, I would like to propose an amendment to this. I recommend that we limit the hours of minors to 9:00 p.m.
That they must be out of the facility by 9:00 p.m. Regardless of the day.
Regardless of the day.
I got some information from someone and to a lot of these breweries.
Do I hear a second for that amendment?
Support.
Support. I have Van Stryland. Now discussion.
Yeah, I had contact with different people, and I could- I have an email on this, but several of these establishments in Colorado, some of them close at 9:00. Not necessarily advocating that, but some of what were referred to as family-friendly establishments close at that time at 9:00 or 10:00. I could give you the names of those establishments, but some of them are in the DuBois area, some of them are in Colorado, but so I tend to agree with those hours for minors. Some of them are longer, like on Saturday or Sunday, but I think that's probably wise.
I think we should probably make sure that we include the beginning timeline too, so it'll be from opening through till 9:00 p.m., just to make sure that we have it in a specific area.
Well, I don't know if this is the time to ask. What of the people who are going to be operating these have any ideas as to what their hours might be?
We are proposing to close the later than 11:00 p.m.
Okay, 'cause that-
And we're very happy with the minors remaining at 9:00.
Okay, 'cause I also have information about some of these that have stayed open, you know, very, very late, so they're on the two extremes.
You want to get some sleep?
Yeah. I'm really interested.
Any other comments or discussion, and this is only on the amendment. Eric?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I understand the intent of the amendment, but when we talk minors, we're talking people from, you know, birth until legal age of 21. So if I'm in there with a 20-year-old, that we have to leave if we're going to stay there as a family at 9:00 for a 20-year-old, and that just doesn't seem, I don't know, right that a person of that age who's with a parent even, or a legal guardian, that they have to leave at 9:00? Because that includes everybody if they want to stay together as a family, and that's what you're proposing, it's family-friendly. Well, all of a sudden, that amendment makes it not family-friendly. So I guess I have a difficulty with that general statement, all minors.
So do you want to put a lower the age limit, Larry, or, I mean-
You know, then you get down to-
Do you want to have an eight-year-old in there till 11:00?
Well, well-
Where do you draw the line?
That would be my response to putting an age limit on it, you know, because all we're going to do is just make it arbitrary at that point.
I'd say they should feel lucky, because they can't take their minor to any other drinking establishment in town that doesn't serve food. So the fact that they could do it together until 9:00 should be a treat for them.
Well, I would disagree with it being a treat or being lucky. I think it's a misfortune that you're limiting a family-oriented establishment until 9:00 if they want to remain as a family. So I don't think any luck or privileges is engaged in that type of amendment when it restricts people. I think it's a misfortunate situation.
On the other hand, what about the six-year-old?
I understand that.
You're looking at the other extreme.
That's why I began the conversation with, I understand the intent of this amendment. I understand all that. But why are we using that age group to determine what happens to an older age group? There's- there's- see, there's some injustice there.
But Larry, that age is not a willy-nilly, we pull out a year. That is a legal age that you can drink and participate, and below that, you are listed as a minor. That's the law.
But the law states, as Corey mentioned, that the state has no age limit for a drinking establishment.
For a minor, right.
Well, that's what we're talking about, right?
Right.
Okay. The communities do.
The communities do.
I understand that. But if we want to go to the law that Bruce is talking about-
No, he talked about it's mandatory and penalized. That 21 years of age, I mean, it used to be 18 in some states, but they all- I think it's now 21 pretty well throughout, unless- there may be a state or two.
No, there are states where they-
There are better 19, yeah? And if it was 19 in our state, then it would be that, but they're listed as minors, Larry. You know, and I know you probably have a person in your family and that is close to that age, and I understand that, but there's a lot of people that have- would like to participate and go there that have younger children.
I guess I'd look at it as a penalty, because today they can't go at all.
So where do we let parents determine their own regulation in this situation? Do we not think parents are able to decide, my eight-year-old or six-year-old, it's really time to go now? Now, why do we have to legislate that parent responsibility?
Larry, can you see a scenario where there may be a young mother that wants to have their children along with them and go there out in the night? I can. I can see a single mother that- in that scenario, and I don't think it's right that those children would be there till 11:00 at night or hour late. And I know, there's always winners and losers, but you know, if you have a 20-year-old next year, it'll be just fine. It's something, but I feel pretty adamant we need- I don't know about anybody else, but I had an awful lot of people that approached me that have a real problem letting minors in, period.
Yeah.
There's a task- drug task force. I had several members approach me that didn't want this amendment passed, because it is an entry point into drugs, and you know, it's a gateway, and you can't argue those points. But nonetheless, I think this is a compromise, and there's always going to be winners and losers. Every family, there's going to be. But next year, if you have a 20-year-old, it'll be fine.
Well, I'm not talking for myself, Bruce, but by the way, I just threw out the 20-year-old. It could be an 18-year-old, it could be a 16-year-old. You know, I think that there is some family responsibility, parental responsibility. I understand what you're saying. Some parents won't be as responsible as we think they ought to be. I understand that point. I think we're being arbitrary about this situation as well, because we can also go with the state and say there'd be no restriction, but we're determining for the city of Pella that there will be. And so, can you see, can you, now that you asked me to see about the single woman, can you see where you're placing a restriction on a family event for some people?
Yes, and there is all their-
So there's going to be winners or losers, and I can use that same argument.
Right.
Okay, so where's it get us?
Well, I guess there is alternative places, Larry. They could go to other establishments that serve food, and if they want to sit there and have a beer, and they're having 18, 19, 20, an arbitrary- but the law does state 21 years old, Larry, so it's not an arbitrary number that we're coming up with. They're minors, they're listed as minors, and I have a real problem with it. I, you know, I- and it's not just me personal. I've had a lot of feedback that this should not go through. I think this is a good compromise.
Haven't you been, as you've been walking through different places around town, another person asks you, what's going to happen with this ordinance?
I've had both.
Well, I know.
Okay.
So have I.
Well, so that type of an argument doesn't get anywhere. You know, it doesn't get anywhere. There's- I've had people say, you know, the same situation I'm talking about now, that they're going to be restricted with their minors.
At the end of the day-
And so, you know, we're-
At the end of the day, you can't legislate good parenthood. I mean, you just can't. If they're going to expose their partners to that kind of an environment, whether it is in a brewery or in a restaurant, just as you pointed out, Bruce, they can just go right down the street, or in fact, right around the corner, or to Knoxville, or one of the other locations, and they're still going to be 20 years old, they're still going to be 19-year-olds, but they'll be able to sit in that bar with their parents until 2:00 a.m.
It's just like when I teach driver ed, and there are 14-year-olds, and they say, guess what? I drove home last night because my supervising parent couldn't drive home. It's going to happen.
It's going to happen.
It could happen.
It's going to happen regardless of what this amendment is going to do to this ordinance. It's going to happen regardless.
So you're going to have to vote-
Because some people, some people, some parents will not assume responsibility for the upbringing of their children.
So you'll have to vote your way.
I'm going to. You haven't convinced me otherwise. We're just having an open-
That's the beauty of a democracy, right?
Exactly. We're just having an open conversation about this, and we could go on this all night long. But so, I'm not going to call the question on this, but I wanted to draw- I want to draw that distinction, that it is a restriction that you're placing on family, and this is what this is all about, a family setting. So-
Is- is the-
That's what they've been- you've been billing it all along.
Is having minors in there a deal breaker?
Yeah.
So you wouldn't do it if you can't have minors in your bar?
You mean minors, period?
Microbrewery.
Microbrewery, yeah. You mean minors, period? No minors can go in at all at any time of day?
Yeah, we're saying if we, I mean, the beginning of this whole thing was that we both have our kids, and we want them to be able to be there with us, and if we can't have kids at all, then it doesn't make sense to be here. The towns will have them.
Larry, I think-
So this may come to a compromise or something.
This discussion is broken.
It's, you know, as the mayor said, Bruce, it's a democracy. I understand.
No, I am- well, I guess I'm trying to- I realize that, and I've thought about that. There- we are setting a- drawn a line in the sand at 21. You know, I think it is legal if you have parental garden, that a parent allow their child to drink in their own residence. That's a parental decision. I'm quite certain of that. You know, and that's fine, but in a public forum in there, I just feel the kind of feedback that I've gotten, I think this is a compromise. The other alternative, because I've gotten so much negative from different people, it isn't going to happen. But I think we could hit a compromise here that is agreeable to the developers and the microbrewery people, and I think we're agreeable here. So-
Well, let's say some of us are agreeable.
Well, yes, excuse me. I did not mean to be all-inclusive.
Well, you did, but I just want to- I'm sorry. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, very good.
But another issue, you know, we can get off this, because we could talk about all of them.
That's the feeling I'm getting. We could just continue on.
I'm getting that too. But I want to know, what's your distinction between family-oriented and non-family-oriented? You know, what's going to be particular about this microbrewery to make it family-oriented?
Well, so our family was in Decore in May. In both places, neither have food, and both allow children. I don't know if they had turkeys out under the vehicles. We were gone by then. We left at 8:00, no matter what, because the kids have to go to bed. But we played cards, we ordered pizza. They had sodas there, all different flavors of sodas for the kids.
Ordered pizza from outside.
Ordered pizza from down the street. They gave us menus there. People were biking in off the bike trail, having a drink, leaving. I mean, the thing is, the turnover of tables was pretty quick, too, just because people aren't sitting there for hours having six beers.
And I understand that we've already made contact with local restaurants and tried to develop a relationship with them, menus, some quick serve menus, in order to bring their cell, potentially will be foods, quote-unquote, service are available at a quick delivery type timeframe, from what I understand, too.
I think another example is, you know, football season, we played Knoxville. So the parents and the kids, the parents, kids on the team, and the still kids. We went to Knoxville, we went to P Street, 5:00 to 6:00. Kids had beer, and we had, you know, one beer and offed the game. You get a perfect example of a nice family restaurant, not restaurant, but you know, microbrewery, where it's nicer than most coffee shops in there, and it was a great atmosphere where we could all get together and talk. So that'd be another example of family atmosphere.
Okay.
And we also plan to heavily produce craft soda. My kids have- several of my children have ADHD, and alternative flavors and colors are not allowable in my house, and it's hard to find those, so I will be a brewer for the sodas, and my kids will be the testers.
Any other questions?
So any activities other than eating and soda?
Games, bingo, live music early from 6:00 to 9:00, a lot of board games, trivia, I mean, think Trivial Pursuit Junior, we play that at my house.
Okay.
Great. That's good.
I do have a comment. I really love your vision, and you've both known that since day one, and I appreciate the fact that you guys understand that this is new territory for yourselves and for us. And so what I see that we're doing in this project, that we're all doing together, no doubt about it, is we're proceeding with caution, and we have to put restrictions on things, because as we all know, those restrictions are made for 5% of the population, and those restrictions are going to be there to help them as well. And as they're wildly successful, of which I have no doubt they will be, later on down the road, we can look at lightening these restrictions. But to have things be tight in the beginning and have the developers of this business agree with them, I just think that this is a win-win situation at this point. You know, we can always come back to the table, but you can't put the toothpaste back in the tooth once you've squished it out. And I don't worry about them, because they're quality individuals, and they're both darn good moms. I worry about the people that start the next one, and then the next one. That's where I say, let's keep it tight, let's run this for a while, and let's just- let's see how it works for everyone. It will be a blast, but we have to keep it tight for a while, because it's new for all of us. And quite frankly, I think they would love to go home at 11:00. Well, probably be 11:45 by the time you clean up and all of that.
And let's not forget this is still controlled by a special use permit, that if we run sideways with issues, that can be revoked, and then we're done.
Right.
So that does give us a little extra control outside the normal bar that's allowed by right, because this isn't. So, any other comments? Okay, we'll call for the question on the amendment only at this point. So this is an amendment that would add the restriction of minors are only allowed in the establishment from the point of opening through till 9:00 p.m. the establishment from the point of opening through till 9:00 p.m.
Skeevout?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Deion?
Yes.
Bakobin?
Yes.
Rand or Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Very good, so now I will call to, if there's a motion for approval of the ordinance, nine four four, as amended.
So moved.
Motion approved by Skeevout, support?
Support.
Support Deion, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes opposed, no, or call or roll.
Skeevout?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Bakobin?
Yes.
Rand or Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move on to claims, section J, number one, abstract bills number 2011. Do I hear motion for approval?
Approve and issue warrants.
Motion to approve and issue warrants by Skeevout?
Support.
Support Bakobin, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes opposed, no, or call or roll.
Skeevout?
Yes.
Bakobin?
Yes.
Rand or Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to other business public forum, are there any members of the audience that would like to bring additional business before the council at this point? Are there any members of the audience that would like to bring any business before the council at this time? Seeing none, do I hear motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Bakobin, support Skeevout, all in favor, please say yes opposed, no, or call or roll.
Bakobin?
Yes.
Skeevout?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Rand or Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?